This opportunity to welcome all of you here tonight for this joint meeting between Burlington City Council and the Almanack County Commissioners. At this time, I would like to, let's see, what's the proper code for it called? For the joint.
Mr. Boswell.
It's a both of the Burlington City Council meeting.
And I am representing Chairman Ewing tonight, I'm Mr. Boswell, Vice Chairman. I would like to call our board.
Order please.
And like to welcome everybody to our joint meeting tonight. I guess this is the first one we've ever had just with Burlington. And it's great to do that. I know Chairman Ewing and I, when we went to the beach, the chamber retreat coming back, he said, "Something's wrong with the picture down here." Burlington has a plan, Evan's got a plan, Graham's got a plan, everybody's got a plan at Almanack County. So, we're working on our plan. So, we hope to work with the various boards to figure out where we all fit together and to make this a better place to live.
Good. Thank you. So, item number three on the agenda represents discussion items. So, I'm assuming that it's 2016 property reevaluation process. Mr. Hunkett?
Jeremy Aitken, I'm here.
Oh, hey, Jeremy.
Jeremy Aitken is here. Jeremy's going to do a presentation and kind of give you an update of where we're at in progress that we have. But Jeremy is our tax administrator approximately two years now, Jeremy?
I'm in my third year.
Third, hardly.
Yeah.
Top line is you have a special reevaluation. But we appreciate the job of Jeremy and his staff. It's us, you need to this point, but with that said, I'll go ahead and share.
Absolutely. Thank you for having me and being ready to hear about the revaluation. I don't have anything very hyper descriptive because I do want to take any questions that anyone might have. The main goal that we have right now are accurate, equitable assessments. The foundation that that rests on is correct information. If you have bad data, you will not find a good value. So, right now, we are in the process of data collecting in the entire county. We are about forty-three thousand parcels in, that's about two-thirds of the way. And we're using folks who are real estate professionals. They live and or work in Almanack County. So, they have a skill set and they have investment because this is their county. We're doing a door-to-door, total relist of the property where we come out with the record card and we check every item on the card. All I know that other pieces of data that I've got is accurate. We use various levels of quality control. Everything that gets checked gets rechecked back on a approved basis by my staff. So, a certain random percentage, we're going back out there behind them, making sure they're doing a good job. That gets entered and then we proof that back. We're keeping accountability with our staff to make sure that we get that accurate data. Now, this year, we're completing the data collection. That should be done by the end of the year. We're also roughing in the scheduled values. What that is, is a pricing guide. We have one from 2009. We're going to begin to build for 2017. Next year is when the action happens. Because next year, we take that scheduled value and we take this good property data that we have and we put them together and we compare them to the market. At that point, what we hope to see is that we're tracking the market very closely. Realistically, you're going to find your errors as soon as you do that. So, we'll be working refining and calibrating so that the values that we put out should look like the late 2016, turning to then and generally first to 2017 market. Folks frequently ask me, "What does that look like?" And I wish I could tell you at this point. I will say that the information that we give to the state quarterly is that we're running about eight percent now from 2009 on R B valuation. Now, the base might grow because you think you're being built, but the same house is probably just a little bit lower than it was in 2009. There are some signs of recovery if you look at the sales volume and look at permits that have been issued. I certainly hope those are going to come into full swing and then bring that baseline up as well, but we will see as it develops. Communication is a big key for this reevaluation. I want to make sure that they're in touch with our citizens, that they have a chance to know what we're doing and to give feedback, to transmit feedback in the process. We're looking at multiple avenues of reaching out, communicating with our citizens and everything, from web presence to telephone meetings, to communication, to a pretty elaborate field process that we have planned to make sure that everyone's concerns are heard and are dealt with. So, that's our reevaluation, just in a brief overview. But maybe you have some questions? Is there anything that I could possibly answer briefly today?
I have a question. So, you're going to go to the property owners and homeowners and send out your sales badges and everything there for that?
Exactly. The folks that we're using give them the incentive so they will have a county issue ID that they will wear. There'll be a county ID on their vehicle. And of course, if you ask any questions about, "Who are you or are you legitimate?", they will respond positively to that and give you a mark card so you can call back to their office. Or if you'd like to grab your phone book, you can call back that way. They're delighted to let you be in touch with us, make sure everything's okay.
Quick follow-up question.
Is it noticed as people prior to coming or just before a cold call?
Well, and not if it's kind of a cold call, no. We could individually target. There's a huge efficiency problem, which is that we can make blanket communications that we are in this process area. But in order to communicate individually, leading the person coming out, it would slow the process down dramatically, which would also make it much more expensive. Right now, the data collection is running for about five dollars a parcel on average, which is very cost efficient. Consider ten dollars a parcel being pretty much kind of industry standard, contracted it out, so it's very efficient. You start scheduling that efficiency starts to go away.
Now, what assurances do you have when you're going to be able to do all the properties? Like the card that you use, the control life?
Exactly. We have an inventory of every parcel in Almanack County. In fact, if you look at our online map, you see there's a contiguous layer of all parcels from one corner to the other. As we go through, we're marking off, we touch and check, and we're actually working by neighborhoods. So, we'll print out the entire neighborhood, data collector will check that out so we know who has what. They check that back in and we deal with it on that neighborhood basis pretty much again and then. Once all neighborhoods are visited, we know we've got parcels.
Jeremy, what's your timeline in 17 for real numbers?
Well, as far as real numbers, probably first of all, 17 should have everything going out to public. So, perhaps in March of 17, we should have the initial numbers, we reach out to the public with notifications. At that point, we're going to be responsive. Last time, we had about sixteen thousand responses, not fourteen or sixteen dollar responses, but hopefully in vicinity of half that many. When those responses come in, this is the key for our process. We don't want to look at it individually, we want to group them together and step back and look at patterns. If I have multiple owners telling me the same thing, I really need to listen to them. If I've got one running in a separate direction from all the neighbors, it may be that's not something you can make a adjustment to. So, we want to be very careful and be consistent as well as be accurate. And once those are cleared through the system, we can get the real numbers and that's where you're talking about the order of equalization. Because we'll send back to the folks that can make a difference, "Here, you're adjusted. Now, we've heard your concern. Here's what we think will fix that concern." And then some folks will say, "No, that's not fixed." And I'll take that for order of equalization. Now, last time around, we would, that last meeting was in October, most of them are over by August. I wouldn't say I have to look at some type of works. Hopefully, we'll be anywhere near that level of value. Obviously, you want to have a clear amount of time to budget basically. We'll probably still be making a certain kind of estimation to have those own ratings.
Just for some of the ladies that have looked on this before, your eight-year cycle has been really, really, really important. These members, great years.
Well, I think we've got the resources and we've got the staff we need. The big piece of information we add in is that we're going to do that because there's no way human possible that a handful of creators can see everything and correct numbers and some problems, but with thousands of eyes on the communal road. So, as long as we keep good communication, we can use that as a check back tomorrow to make sure that we're finding those important issues and getting the rights. Any other questions? Thank you so much for your time. If you have any questions later, feel free to get in touch with me. Everybody, bye.
Thank you. Next, we have animal services. Jess, come here.
Good evening. Thanks for trying to discuss animal services a little bit. I wasn't sure about technology. I've got a short PowerPoint, but I also have some hard copies of the presentation I put in the desk. I'll be about.
Great. That like, Matt can talk to like him like that, right? Yeah. Yeah. That's me. You look better out there. You're wearing a condom. You're wearing a condom. Shoppy shoppy. If we could before we start, animal services for a brief history, and Jess, you may have the year, was sometime now, it's been a consolidated service where, as soon as they run down the services, all the municipalities and the counties in the contract situation, it's cost of that per capita basis. You take the populations of the cost of the operation of all the municipalities in terms of number of citizens and the remaining part, the county precincts. And Jess, tonight, we're fortunate to have her down for almost two years, Jess?
Year and a half, yeah.
Almost. She's made some, she's made some really good strides in this area. This is a very passionate service to a number of people. It's one that we were fortunately dealing with a number of animals and that number's kind of down the thumb, but tonight, she's been talking about in need of a facility that we had in operation for longer than I've been here, it's a long time. And where we can hope to begin some conversations with the county and then later some other jurisdictions about where we're going in terms of the intake facility for animal services. So, Jess?
All right. Well, thanks for inviting me to talk about animal services a little bit. This is a subject I'm very passionate about.
Jess, you can just pick up now.
All right. So, I just started off, just to talk a little bit about kind of, there are animal shelters and animal control is in today's world, in today's society and how they think about it. It's no longer really the dog center in town, to use that old terminology, but society really cares about pets and really has a higher expectation of how we care for unwanted pets in our community, with the ultimate goals of unwanted pets being free, being able to be rehomed rather than euthanized. And kind of with that thought in mind, in today's new shelter planning and design, we see animal shelter and control facilities that are reflective of that ideology and how folks are looking to think about pets a little differently and how we care for them. So, a little brief history about animal control in Almanack County. This took some digging, I'm talking to people that have been around for a long time and even then, I wasn't able to nail down any firm dates, but as, during the discussions, it's believed between 1965 and 1970, Burlington Animal Shelter was built and it's actually the extraterritorial area section of Burlington down near Hall River. And at some point in time, there was also a shelter that was built and operated by the county, which was located in Graham, and it was on staff by Burlington, the city of Burlington. So, there was two shelters up until about 1990, 91. And it was at that time, and you can see the whole picture down here to the bottom left, that some renovations remained in the Hall River facility to expand it and accommodate and essentially consolidate operations into one facility at that period of time. And then in 2004, Pet Adoption Center was constructed about that same time and society started thinking a little bit differently about animals and come up on the radar and about how the importance is for animals to be rehomed. So, that was how the Pet Adoption Center came about and to this day is still functioning. The purpose of animal services, not just in our county, but in most areas throughout our state, is primarily for rabies prevention and control. We work closely with the Almanack County Environmental Health Department in that regard. Our second priority is enforcement of animal laws, our city codes, and then for the sheriff's office, animal control unit, the county laws and ordinances. The third piece that we do is provide sheltering of the animals from all over Almanack County that are stray, lost, abandoned, surrendered, involved in criminal cases, have bitten someone or have been exposed to rabies. So, that's a lot of different ways we get animals come through our facility. We also work to promote responsible pet ownership and address pet overpopulation through our various programs, one of which is the low-cost spay neuter funding for Almanack County that's been going strong since 2010 and really made some positive impacts to reduction of the number of animals coming through our facility. And finally, and one of the most important things as far as our citizenship are concerned, is providing the main care of the animals. And you have a lot of concerns about animals in our community. One of the important things, and I won't spend much time on this, but I just wanted to kind of study this out there so it puts a good grasp of the number of nonprofit agencies and other agencies governing these with which we work in our community. And without these collaborative relationships, animal services wouldn't be able to come near to meeting its goals for animal placement and some of the community assistance, public assistance we provide, needing pet owners in our community. So, we're really fortunate to have a really strong base of support within our community. As Harold had mentioned earlier, this old facility that was built way back when is needing replaced and we've been, over the years, really doing what we can to patch it up and get through this. You can see through some of these photos, it's really getting beyond its usable lifespan at this point and some of them need to start discussions and thinking about replacing in the future. There's a lot of functional issues as well as their negative impacts to animal health, staff around the houses working in this old facility and then of course, how our members of the community see it when they come in and have to do business in the shelter. One of the main concerns we have is there's limited capacity for animal holding. And sometimes adoptable animals have to be euthanized because we just don't have the holding space despite all these community partners, we never would get in this place. Sometimes that is a reality that we face. There's no separate or secure area that houses dangerous or aggressive animals away from public access areas and that's a, that's a public safety concern for us. And of course, when we do have these larger scale seizures and case, such as ten years ago, we had a case where there were seventy-some pit bulls that had to be brought in and we had to outsource that to have other counties help us with one of those animals during the required holding period before it was able to process that case. So, about one-fifth of this facility is being used to house animals that was not originally designed to house animals because the need is so great. So, a lot of these rooms that were office spaces or in one case, our secure satellite court area where our officers could offload the animals securely and safely, have had to be converted to animal holding areas to manage the number of animals coming in. One of the other interesting pieces about animal shelters in our state is that we must meet some pretty stringent state requirements and our inspector needs them. And so, there's a very detailed format the inspectors go through and it's sometimes challenging to meet those minimum standards in this facility and it will increasingly become more and more difficult to pass state inspections as the facility becomes more inadequate for housing animals with the age and time and not being able to meet those minimum standards. So, as we talked a little bit, we're very positive to see that the trends of animal intakes have been decreasing since 2010 and that correlates with the opening of the low-cost spay neuter clinic. So, as we've seen more animals become spay neutered, we see fewer puppies and kittens being born and they end up fewer in the shelters. So, we're very positive about that. And that's a trend that we expect to continue as long as we're able to continue supporting and promoting spay neuter services that are affordable and accessible to citizens, especially those citizens from demographics where most of its originate. This slide shows a little more about our disparity in the actual number of kennels that we have to hold animals and the number of animals admitted. So, the blue graph at the top shows the number of cat enclosures we have, a little more than thirty, and the red bar shows you how many cats we actually receive through our shelter each year. And it's the same thing for dogs. So, the majority of the year, our holding space is critically inadequate for the number of animals that we have coming through the facility. So, we've taken a look at what are some options going forward and as we look at the existing Pet Adoption Center, which is only ten years old, it would make sense to renovate and expand that facility, which is in good shape, because it would be a little more physically comfortable and affordable than trying to do new construction and starting from scratch. It would also consolidate operations into one facility, which we've done before way back when, and that works very well because that means you don't have two sets of staff and two sets of utilities and buildings to find and operate. So, we would expect increased efficiency and reduce costs with consolidation. It also would ensure adequate and appropriate spaces for animals as well as for our staff, both county staff and city of Burlington staff that operate out of these buildings for at least twenty-plus years. And it also helps the facility, our customer-oriented approach to service delivery in Almanack County for animal services. As we did a preliminary needs assessment a few months back, they projected the total project cost for four point nine million and that would be inclusive of equipment in the buildings as well. And we look at these kind of facilities, as we talked about before, and meeting public expectations, be it really a destination for pet adoption and for animal services for Almanack County, that would be a positive and welcoming experience for citizens and folks in the years to come. And we looked at some comparisons of other counties and their shelter, animal shelter needs, and other folks are in similar situations facing aging, buildings and needing replacement. Chatham County most recently had a need assessment done and their estimated cost was at four point seven million and their volume of animals coming through is less than half of what we see at Burlington Animal Services due to that comparison. Guilford County had some discussion, their commissioners estimated a renovation or move there would be anywhere between three and six million. And out in rural Vance County, where they have very few animals coming through, they're looking to add a new facility at a cost of anywhere between. So, I tried to keep it very brief and cover a lot of information. We have a lot of extra details in the handouts, but at this time, if you have any questions, I would like to answer them.
Mortar Fisher, one of the reasons we wanted to bring this to you for your consideration is it's a county responsibility for animal control and animal shelters. And we've had a wonderful partnership with the city of Burlington these years, but it is going to be a financial responsibility that we will have to end up working with our municipal departments as well. It may not be this year, but it is something that is included on the short horizon, but we will have to look at for us. So, that's the recall of the morning, you know, just want you to be shocked when you do come back and hopefully a couple of years, see a capital improvement for the shelter.
Have you got the space for Burlington to add animal services?
Yeah, it's tight, but what all assessments have told is that this will fit their own existing properties and another benefit of not having to start from scratch and acquire a property.
So, we're looking for an idea and if that's, you can add on with us. Jess, wanted to explain the hard copies that they've made, that they've made.
Oh, yes. I also included in that tablet, count your 2014 physical reports. So, you can actually see the volume of animals coming in, what happens to those animals, where they're coming from, and the other activities that's going on at animal services. So, wanted to be sure that you guys had that information as well, to kind of to discuss the volume of animals that we deal with year after year, which is safe with coming in. We're very glad about that.
So, the spay neuter program, is that eliminating some of the animals getting there?
It's certainly helping because since 2010, we saw this one graph, that's where we started to see a decline in animal and pets. Before that year, I actually have another slide I didn't include, they were on the rise. So, now, we've got the low-cost spay neuter clinic where it's really accessible and affordable to citizens, that's really has some impacts because we have a lot of folks taking advantage of that. That's also included in the statistics numbers where you can see, I think there's about sixteen hundred animals that were spayed and neutered in 2014, not just from Almanack County, but there's also a few folks from just outside the counties in our services here as well. And so, that's been very beneficial because sometimes we also get animals from just on the campus.
So, the funds for the spay neuter, that comes through our budget?
It's a shared cost as part of the animal services stack.
Right. Our contract this year with the shelter is budgeted at three hundred and five. Cannot remember that.
Per capita cost that we put out there, also with spay neuter and then the big country block in, Paul's was a big part in actually working with us and getting the contract for the bill to sell. That volunteer group, spay neuter would not be yearly worth as now. So, we did the pet adoption center, but we found out we simply cannot adopt all these animals out. Can't keep up, we can't do it. And got to eliminate some of the intake and that's beginning to happen. But it takes, what Jess has done too, pretty far along, a lot of the groups together, a number of groups, they've all to group all of the county, people from Evan or West, the Burlington groups have come in and worked with us there to try to make this a better operation. This old building is an old building. And Jess, you mentioned, this is strictly guided by state guidelines, remember what we have to have there in regards to temperature of the animals, disease control. Dr. Corden is here. Dr. Corden has been our hero for years, our vet has come to staff and saved us. Dr. Corden can tell you we appreciate what you've done over these years. It's nearly right now, we operate two hospitals. One site here in the Harbor area and then one pet adoption center was located there , which involves a part of the church. So, that's the concept behind this. Spay neuter clinic would remain hopefully there, be open for a long time and then obviously as soon as we add it on or renovate this bill of use, should put us in a position where we can control, better control the animal situation for the next fifteen, fifteen years.
Just to see, what do you have, twelve thousand five square foot out there now?
Yeah. And for checking the needs assessment, so just we need about fourteen thousand.
What is the total budget here? It's like one point three million, sir? That's correct. So, it's about one point three million and then it's divided, it's happened, it's our budget, one point three million. And it's been a tight, tight business. And these jurisdictions just bill with capital bases on animal waste now. And that printout also breaks down where the number of that comes from and some of that is overlaid because it's pretty healthy. Sheriff picks up and a number of small jurisdictions in cities do that and is not.
Right. We don't enforce leash laws in county, but vicious dogs and running dogs, those are the ones that we really deal with. We don't force, enforce individual municipal ordinances, but we don't force a county by order. And again, everything goes to Jess.
Burlington is a municipal, going to a tethering, no tethering policy in Graham.
Adopted theirs.
Adopted theirs. It's a process to put that in. So, there's some changes there, but obviously, we're not trying to get into county business here and I owe my own. And it's just a different situation if you've got ninety dogs in the county. It is different in some ways from just ours, but it's a, she doesn't really have a wonderful job. It's quite a task. We have to relate this, but it's a difficult position to keep staff. staff, and it's a, it's not a pretty job. It's a constant plug, average within four, four in a month intake.
Yeah, we just did a poll member in April, so we expect that to come through several months before we see some type of... So it's really taxing on our staff, just being a little...
We're very fortunate to have a full dialogue with Jess and her staff on how things are going and what they're doing. Some of the public-private partnerships have really helped out with getting things under control. We could not do it without that, but I can tell you, they run a pretty tight, really, really efficient operation. And when she raises her hand and says, "I think we've got a need over here," you bet we got a need over here. So it's good to have, and it's necessary to continue to function, the level of service, not only that's required by the state, but really that we should provide, you know, for the types of services that need us.
And we'll be happy to meet you, as the staff and the board are saying.
I was making a guess, maybe. We would hope that this thing, we look at early sixteen, seventeen fiscal year, it needs certain things, not exaggerating.
And certainly, anyone interested in coming down, I think we're a little further detailed about what we do and conditions and things like that.
I'd like to do that.
Yeah.
I'm surprised that the euthanasia, sixty-two percent, I would have thought after...
And that's lower than...
It's lower, I would guess.
You start at...
It's a lot of...
And euthanasia block, and if that change has done several years ago, it's done in much more Asian mainway, new gas chambers, or it's done individually.
As a matter of fact, the state, recently, van gas chambers across the state, finally, some years of controversy with, it's all done by injection. Increasingly, I mean, it's just becoming unacceptable to control animal population with euthanasia increasingly so. I'm a little concerned with that, I see that, but it's something that we need to consider as far as our animal services are concerned going forward in the future. And certainly, that's not what we want to have happening.
I've got a bunch of other questions. Did you fifteen hundred acres worth of acres of land give it for you? And if you got twelve, five out there now, you want to go to fourteen, fifteen enough?
Yes, it's wholly inadequate what we have right now running through there. That was the needs assessment that the shelter planners, which are specific to animal shelter architects and run through. I think probably as we get into the detail and stuff, it would probably come in a little bit. Certainly, we need them than what we have, but I don't know that...
Tell me the number that Jess was looking to ask, and carry what we have now.
Fourteen thousand. Yes, fourteen thousand thirteen. No, total, total, we have about twelve thousand total now.
Five thousand.
Fourteen thousand.
More, sorry. Is it a little over fourteen thousand on our ticket?
No, we have seventy now.
Yeah, twelve.
Yeah, we have about nine, twelve right now. And all our, so the buildings and facilities, but you know, this would be much more than a lot of it.
Pet adoption centers, yeah, yeah. You look at that.
Thank you. Next, economic development. You're kind of good.
Well, if we had a nap today, what we really, you really can't have a joint meeting about, let's have this topic. You know, one who would like things, the city of Burlington, and their staff, and work from back about partnerships that we just have, and any kind of the county that ever needed anything, or I hope the city can say the same, same thing, kind of, never needed anything with same economic development, and trying to bring tax base and jobs here to Alamance County and the city of Burlington, we're here for you. And nothing new that we're aware of at this point, but we just wanted to thank you publicly for the partnership that we do have, and what we've done in the past, we've done some really good projects, sheep, lab corps, a couple of lab corps, Kaiseroff, a couple of Kaiseroffs. So, but we'll continue to work with you in the future, and we look forward to it.
I have the other with Honda, non-traditional incentive number, by working with the Air Force to expand operations there, and keep part, and then landly vet, that business is, that has a significant upside. We talked to councils, spoke last week at the work session, a couple of councilmen talked to us about trying to put a more comprehensive plan together. Duster Parks is one part of economic development. Infield was another really important part of economic development. If you have infrastructure already in place, economic development can be just not, you know, distribution centers, it's been a lot different, it used to be a lot more than that. The lab corps worked, we had corporate offices downtown, and obviously, the big lab corps project was on Front Street, the labs, where twelve hundred people working there, and people who were quite regular, are very highly educated and qualified individuals. So it's a, it's a difficult, it's a challenge, because it's very competitive. Craig remembers, and we were involved in sheep, and I had to give him a bottle of milk, and email, whatever would have started. Sheep started off at one hundred forty-six sites. And you don't know where you are, with about ten or twelve left, and then it's just, it's competitive. And it's not, it's transportation, location, utilities, water, sewer is absolutely critical. And now, what we're seeing is fiber, where you have fiber, but the new industry coming in, networking, where you have ability to get fiber that really take you to another level in terms of potential jobs that you might be considering. But it's a, it's a, it's a long-term effort in the county, where we're talking all the lot of things.
Harold, I didn't hear you say, "A good place to live" was being reported.
It is a good place. It is important. It's unfortunately more important for some businesses than our others.
Sure. I just wanted to make the point that it's important that we have big schools, and other attributes of what constitutes quality of life.
If you all recall, when Honda came in, actually, when the company came in, wanted to do a tour, and they asked to see schools, neighborhoods, parks, commercial areas, so we pretty much knew and involved with this. We, they were bringing people in to live here. Some people aren't quite as acquainted as they are in real work, but that's always a good sign when they ask for this.
Any other comments? Just any cut, on this call. Okay, item D, transportation issues, fixed route bus system, Mike, you know, you're welcome.
Guys, we, you all know this is a process that's been going on, since a lot of us had dark hair, and it's had some of head hair. But what we're, the night here is to try to give you an update on exactly where the situation is, and councils took action. We try to update council on the basis as we get through a date of hopefully, service beginning in late spring of sixteen. Mike will show you the route system that's been laid out as we speak, and then attempt to go over any other questions that you might have concerning where this is, really is an urban-type system, going forward, so Mike?
Thank you. Thank you, perhaps, and Mike, hope that I can answer any questions, but sort of present you an update, sort of stash for where we're at with fixed route system. The history, I just went back and pulled a few dates, I didn't pull all of them, we did begin study in two thousand and six. Lots of information went into that, we did surveys, we did poll one agency interviews, we talked to everyone in our planning area, which goes all the way to Evan, all the way to Gibsonville, all the communities in between, we talked to everyone, we were all involved at that time. Two thousand and thirteen, fast forward ahead, city managers came together, started talking about how to really make this thing move forward, you know, who was going to be in, who was going to be out, how finances would be done, things of that nature. So we got through that process, you're probably familiar with me going around to a lot of city councils, all of them actually in talk with them about, do you want to participate, and how would that, how would that be done? We get to thirteen and fourteen, and you see Gibsonville, Burlington, what decided to start the fixed route system. After the approval of that, with the consent of the city council, we went to work as a staff, city of Burlington is the lead agency. The main grant for public transportation is the section fifty-three or seven grant, that's a federal grant, provides eighty percent of capital and fifty percent of operations. So it's a major federal grant, used nationwide by all urban areas in the nation, it's not just an Alamance County or Burlington grant. We were also awarded, just recently in April, three hundred thousand dollars by SCPT, to use that for all non-capital items. We'll be using that for our branding and public education, and our startup process, which those are underway right now. We also will be going out with a service provider, requests and proposals, we'll bring a private business in here to operate that system. If you're familiar with public transportation, just our east and west and around the nation, when you see your bus drivers, they're probably contractors that work for a company that does this a little bit. We'll start off that way, it seems to be the best fit, most systems are startup, instead of creating all the details that go along with the city department, if you will. So they'll maintain the buses, they'll hire the bus drivers, they'll fire the bus drivers, they'll do drug testing, they'll do all maintenance on the equipment as well. Harold mentioned the goal, with all these things falling into place, would be early spring or summer of two thousand and sixteen. That's about twelve months or less into that. Just wanted to go over how we designed this system, so just saying we need a public transportation. We partnered with Parsons Brinkerhold, which is a national transportation firm, they came in, did the study for us, also did the update for us. We looked at how to design the system. Of course, you want to go where people are, and you want to go where they want to go. So you can, you can see a few of those there, public housing, residents over sixty-five. We also wanted to connect with everything that was going on in the county already. Pete Monat authority for regional transportation through our area daily, going to Chapel here in Duke, and going back to Breezeboro, Lexington, Salem. The Illinois long bus comes downtown Burlington, we're going to connect and partner with all those existing services. The key factor of this, it's going to be a long major thoroughfare, there's going to be required walking. It's not going to go to everyone's doorstep, everyone's block, or into everyone's neighborhood, or into every park developed. It's going to be a walking service, and if you go to other urban areas, if you travel, you're probably familiar with that, you're having to walk to bus stops, or go to a subway facility. We are going to look at sidewalks improvements, that grant I mentioned allows you to use those funds for sidewalk improvements in your community, to get those folks to be able to walk to the bus stops. And a key point beyond getting to those areas, we want to make sure it's safe, we want to make sure it's safe for people to feel comfortable using the system. Operating hours right now are five thirty a.m. to six thirty p.m., Monday through Friday. It's going to be a weekday service, we understand, and you can probably assume, the first request is going to come on the first Saturday to Sunday, and that happens nationwide. This system will start with a weekday service. Also, aren't you going to eight or nine o'clock at night? Well, there's finances, it's like you've been talking about other things involved, there's a limited amount of budget to provide this system and startup phase. One of the key things we did with the system to make sure that the personnel at the regional medical center could reach work by seven a.m. Everyone of the main or larger entities that still have somewhat of a shift work, they have a key important change during the day. They also, graciously, are going to provide a parking lot facility on their, on their site, I'll mention that in just a second. They're going to partner with us to be able to have, not only a stop there, but a parking lot facility to get the park system and the fixed route. It is a forty-five minute travel time, we'll be clear about that. If you get on downtown Burlington, it will take you forty-five minutes to get out to our further supporting Gibsonville, it'll take you forty-five minutes to get out to Alamance Crossing, it'll take you forty-five minutes to get over to the East Burlington area, turn around and come back. We looked at thirty minutes, we feel comfortable with thirty minutes, but we don't want, we don't want to push something that we can't achieve. It's a new service, you're actually selling something, you have a product. We're trying to make sure the transit pleases everyone, hopefully, at the beginning, we don't want to have a thirty-minute system and be running forty minutes every hour. So forty-five minutes should give us a good time to start, and give us a comfortable leeway. That means ninety-minute headway, you hear that a lot, just a little chance, forty-five minutes out, forty-five minutes back in. Again, the goal, I'll put this in here again, a lot of things have to happen. That service provider I mentioned has to come on board, the equipment has to be ordered, we have to get through things like name and color, and things of that nature, so we can meet that summer, summer goal. Four routes, and we'll have a map here in just a second. Four routes with one bus, one bus each, the schedules are going to be coordinated, where you can all transfer downtown Burlington. Looking at area on the downtown side right now, where all the buses will come in, stay about three or four minutes, stay on the bus, transfer the bus, and go back out. It's just a temporary location right now, in the future, there may be a future development site, although we have a, you know, transit terminal. It's again based on the quarter-mile walking distance, that's a national standard. People are in urban areas, are looking at a typical example, which will walk with a quarter of a mile to the stop, so. That's something new, and we talked a lot about that with folks. We don't have public transportation here, so we're not used to walking two stops, but around the nation, that's sort of the standard that they use.
To help our obesity problem. It ought to help our obesity problem.
I would, I would make sure that very good point. It does a lot of things for you when you, when you have to, or by choice, have to walk to something, to anything, a park, a transit stop, a library, or anything, yes, it does. And that goes back to improving our sidewalk network, it's all connected. Paratransit is very important, this means that from three quarters of a mile to the route, if you're certified medical, certified, you'll be able to take that van to your house, pick you up at the door, and take you to your location. And that's a medical certified situation, and that will operate the same hours and the same days that the system's operating. It won't operate outside those hours or outside those days.
Mike, just for clarity, that is, that is federal required?
Yes.
And, and that will be bid out, that service will be bid out as well?
Yes, yes. So, and that's, that's something that, yeah, it has to be provided when you go to fixed route system. Gibsonville customers, as you'll see in the metro, or anyone, on the blue route, instead of having to ride all the way back downtown to Burlington, we're going to have a stop at Hollyam Mall, where they can get off there and get on another bus, and continue out to the hospital, or continue out to Alamance Crossing, instead of going to downtown Burlington. And I've mentioned before, you know, when coordinate and connect, there will be a parking lot facility at the hospital, and from that hospital location, park will go from there downtown to Stony Park. So there'll be a facility there, the hospital, probably fifty spaces plus, it's going to be open to the public, it's not just going to be a parking lot, but it's going to be a location where fixed route system can come, act can come, park can be there, and have a shelter there where they can coordinate and go back out. So police will be working there. The map. Again, a service area, we do have somewhat more detailed routes now, so they are changing, can change, we're not putting facilities in the ground, covering them up. It's a transit route, it's basically a sign on the side of the street, if you need to go from Main Street to Smith Street, you pick the sign up and put it on Smith Street. You advertise it, let people know, but you want to make sure transit goes where people want to go. So just because you see these routes today, doesn't mean after we start using the system and people start lighting it, we don't get better feedback, and we'll make some adjustments. But we tried to cover the entire area, this is the Gibsonville area, basically one route here, the blue route, back here on Church Street, all the way back to downtown, the red route, I mentioned employment, excuse me, ARMC facility here, that goes right to Alamance Crossing. You've got the green routes, where the Glen Raven area, on the edges here, back in the town, and the purple route, which is the Wal-Mart, around this building right now, this area right now. Just a service area that provided most of the coverage that we thought most of the riders shouldn't be. We do have a hole here, we need to hear about that, but that will cost dollars to install the route. But we went with our initial approach to where most of the rider would be, or where most of the riders would want to go. And also, mentioned here, this will be the parking lot facility, that... And also mentioned here, this will be the parking ride facility. That, that route will take the park directly on the interstate right to ACC. Four routes, four buses. What would the equipment look like? Well, it's going to be called a light transit vehicle. Talk to legal with those, there's somebody out here in the parking lot, that ACTA uses this very similar type, type piece of equipment. It's twenty-nine foot, twenty-two passengers. This is not the color scheme. This is an example. It might be confusing. This is what the vehicle will look like. It is all ADA accessible. We'll have a bike back in front. Takes about four to five months to get it. But we're still on our time schedule. Let's put the base thumbs on.
These are on state contract, Mike. Am I mistaken or what?
Well, this is the state's requirement that we use these. We'll have to get these out of the city. But yes, transit systems are using these, the light transit vehicles. The governance, the, the guidance for this will be Transit Advisory Commission. We're looking to appoint, the county council to appoint that in July, as all of our other boards are appointed. They will have oversight and make recommendations to the Burlington City Council. You'll have four Burlington members and one Gibsonville member. And until that time, and we've been working along, city council will be making decisions that need to be made soon. But hopefully in the fall, that group will meet, and start looking at things like names and colors and the routes, and hearing things of that nature, to make recommendations back to city council. Our timeline, I've mentioned all the items here you see in red. We are in the midst of our, our, our request proposal for the transit branding and the public education and the website. We'll receive those this month. Hopefully, that firm will go to work in May. And out here in the file, we'll have a name, a logo, and everything you need to order the equipment, which will be in September to October. Which you've got to know what it's going to look like, what color scheme we want to use. We've already adopted and gone on to our schedules and affairs and our routes and hours of operation. Then the next large thing inside of the equipment will be that RFP for the service provider. That's going to take several months to accomplish, to do that. But hopefully with all those things, with, with the early sixteen award, with that service provider contract, there's our goal, as we mentioned, out here in spring to summer of two thousand and sixteen. And as you see on top, that brick I mentioned, the Transit Commission will be in a month to deliver all those details. That's all I have as far as where we're at, more or less. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Look, I have a question. It seems like we're missing an opportunity. You mentioned the infrastructure required and the opportunities, and I think everybody knows that I'm on the ACTA board along with Mayor Pro Penn Bossa. Where ACTA is already operating these kinds of vehicles, it's a lot more than just four. I don't know how many we have. It's fifteen or twenty or something. We already have the infrastructure in place to do the vehicle maintenance and driver training and all the DOT requirements that go along with that. It seems like we're duplicating kind of some of that infrastructure that go out of this town. And maybe there's an opportunity for ACTA to bid on a, on contractor, or even part of that.
Yeah, but the whole system is going to be bid out.
But, but ACTA's in the business. I mean, the van response, transportation, and the paratransit is way more complicated than just a fixed route system. So this doesn't really seem like rock and science. So maybe that could be reflected in, in the, this cost. I'm just thinking of what's going to be the most efficient of providing this to the community. The other thing I, I, I kind of see is that, the way this has evolved in Alaman's County is, it's been handed to the municipality to work it out. And so, and the result is that we have two municipalities that are participating. And yet we have one municipality that has the county seat, and that's going to be a destination for a lot of the people who are going to be using this system. Not to mention ACC being a grant. You mentioned we're going to have PARK access to ACC. I'm on that board too, along with Jim and, and the rest of this room, but. And this fifty-three oh seven money, it supports ACTA, and it supports this, this system, and the biobus, and try, that's what, well, it's supporting the capital of the task that's in our heart. We have, and then the triangle framework, and, and every, you know, there's got to be a community match anytime those federal dollars would be used. And, and the city of Burlington, the city of Gibsonville, Burlington decided on the vehicle registration fee. And I don't think Gibsonville did it, but it's a natural one that they did make. But, but if ACTA needs fifty-three oh seven money to do some of those urban trips, which it's going to need to do, I guess it can't go after vehicle registration fees for anybody who lives in city of Burlington, because that's already tied up in this program. So I guess my point is, it just seems like we have a disjointed public transportation system for our community the way it's kind of evolved. I'm not being kind of critical of anybody in particular, but I just, I'd hate to see an opportunity to be missed to further take advantage of positive synergies. Another thing, ACTA's in a location right now where they're going to have to buy a new location. And wouldn't it be great if ACTA could co-locate the system here, if there's going to be a transportation hub? And there's got to be some synergy with respect to vehicle maintenance, or if it was all one organization, it just seems like it could be really efficient for the community.
You know, I would probably say it's as organized now from a synergy standpoint as it's ever been. As you all know, I mean, I chaired ACTA for a couple of years. I think the future of ACTA from a health standpoint, from just a physical standpoint, would be in jeopardy without this fifty-three oh seven money. They are now able to draw funds. They were just, um, awarded some monies, some, some pretty substantial monies for their services with regards to that. From the service provider, there's not going to be a lot of cost savings if, if ACTA does it or someone else. They're providing the service. Those services are going to have hard costs. Doesn't matter who prepares it. The, the infrastructure of the, of the equipment is a ninety-ten match. So a lot of that money's coming from the federal funds as well, you know. And, and I agree wholeheartedly that it would be wonderful if the other municipalities onboard as well. But everybody's got to manage their own deal the way they see fit. But with regards to the city of Burlington, this was in the, you know, Mike talked about the study in two thousand and six, and then the study from Parsons Brinckhoff in two thousand and twelve, or, or thirteen, I guess, was updated. There was actually another study done by URS in two thousand and nine, and, and it was updated in two thousand and twelve. So it, it just became apparent to our council that we had to have on it from a municipal standpoint of what would be best for us. If you back up on the agenda just a little bit, there was an economic development portion. And if you don't think public transit is critical in economic development, talk to some companies that march you off the list because you didn't have it before they ever came to see you, before they ever got to it. So I think with, with us taking the lead on this, and, and really trying to establish routes with regards to a process that's going to meet the approval of the FTA and the fifty-three oh seven money, that others can be funded off of. TTA's picked up some money off of that, as was necessary to help Meven. So they've already gained some synergy from what we've done. And PARK's going to be able to move forward with the park and ride over to the hospital. They're gaining synergy off of what we've done. So I think it's now starting to move in a direction with Burlington's lead that if some others can see, hey, this thing is going to work, and there is some need, and public, public and private partnerships are getting important. United Way sees the need. Maybe we're willing to, to, to come forward and say, hey, we're willing to get involved in this. So I think the overall health of the program is at its infancy and getting better, as opposed to being a lot of different entities that's kind of out on their own. I think from a collaborator standpoint, there's probably as much dialogue now, Mike, frankly, from long as there's ever been, from the, from the TAC perspective and, and the NPO and what's going on there. So we're, it, it's becoming more regional than it looks right now, and by the time we're at the end of this timeline, you really see that.
I thought the city of Burlington, though, what you've done, the part of me who's been critical about the city, of course. I just, I just want to make sure that good collaboration is doing, you know, this opportunity.
Mike, do you recall the funding amount that ACTA's going to be getting?
Uh, three hundred and sixty-plus thousand to do general purpose trips. That's, that's door.
For urban trips.
That's door-to-door, just where you're still a little long, or a doctor, uncertain. And that's the top of any of those local trips I mentioned.
But, but the key, the key that we ran into a little bit is this. The general purpose trip, I mean, it's a good, a door, that you have to go anywhere. It's about a forty-five dollar cost for that.
Oh, it's very inefficient compared to the fixed route. I don't, I'm not arguing with that.
We're talking about urban transportation here, a little different than, than in reference to, so that's, so that other thirty-five dollars could be picked up by another government, federal funds, to make it work. That, that, I think that's where, you know, I talked about the, and, and, and really, we were certainly hoping Graham and the board, council could do a wisdom show to not to understand that. But it's, it's a, in the long run, in terms of efficiency, and, and from the urban side, this is about far the most efficient way to go on about it in terms of providing the basic level of service now. As we said, we would give these people both on paratransit and the general purpose option. People come in and bid on providing that service itself. But the fixed route is, it'd be interesting to see, will it make everybody happy? No. Because I remember the mayor, and maybe you recall it, with Paratroc Community Center about six years ago, his first comment was, it's not like a school bus going in front of your house to pick you up. And we, and that was with education, we worked six years ago. So attempting to work with various other public service agencies, realizing where they think the number of their participants and people they serve would certainly need this service, that's kind of how this whole route system has evolved. And certain will be figured with as we go along, but the contracts without the previous forbid will be going out here relatively soon in terms of all service provisions to meet this spring goal of sixteen.
If I could like one comment here, just a little couple of what, yeah, but, I think it, you know, overall, all the features. This system is generally far better than ACTA. We say that, is it, it's important for economic development. And we can all agree that we're, you know, we want to promote economic development. I guess the second thing is, at some point, we have some entity has to take the lead. And I know serving on the TAC, it's been a long time coming. But also to pick up on another point, this is going to be more regional down the road than it does seem today. But you almost got to have this catalyst to get in and start this all rolling, which I think the city of Burlington is doing. And two, as far as ACTA is concerned, there's nothing to foreclose ACTA from bidding on the paratransit, bidding, right? So what I see, I oppose this. I still see an important role to ACTA. And, and I, I just think we all have to work, all of these entities are going to have to work. At the end of the day, when all of these parts are coming together, and we get into it, and we have some experience, we're going to wind up, you know, with, I guess, a service that's going to promote economic development, and most of all, is going to serve those people that are not being served now. And having said that, I'll, I'll talk about.
Thank you. Other part two, Bob, is that the disjointed statement. When we gave every municipality within Alaman's County an opportunity to join us in creating transportation from the mountains, basically all the way to Rock. Meven drops out, Severford, that connection's missed. The county seat you spoke of, we missed that opportunity. The larger opportunity that we, we've missed, and we're still trying to figure out, is how to get to ACC from the eastern, eastern part of Burlington. So we, we still haven't figured that out. It's a long route from, from the east side over to AMRC. We kept the, a PARK bus and an understand PARK and how it's connected, but it's still, I, I would still like to figure out a way to make that, that shorter route from, from Burlington, east Burlington to the community college. But the, the part about being disjointed was created by us predicated officials in the municipality. So it made us, I thought we had this. When we first started this conversation, I felt, especially Graham and Meven were on board with us. And obviously, we're not. So maybe they'll see some positive results out of this thing opening in late, or late spring of sixteen, and figure out there's something positive with this, and something good's going to happen, and maybe they'll reconsider. Especially Meven with that connection that basically from the mountains to Rock. But you can get away with it, so.
Well, I, I think that, I've always considered county government having a role on issue that process in this program.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And I don't think our county set up to, to facilitate any of it.
And I, I, I would agree with that as well. But we'll also go back to economic development. In two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, somewhere in there, we had the first of two economic summits. And we said we would share resources regardless of who got the jobs or the companies. Meven has been outstanding. Graham has stepped up and been outstanding. That's good for Alaman's County, and I'm, I'm very happy with that. Burlington has had their few, but here lately appears that they're bypassing and going to Graham and Meven. And I'm okay with that, because again, that's what part of the economic summit was about in, in LA. And I think that's one of the few opportunities this entire county of elected officials was all under. And that was, what was it, correct? Two thousand and eight or nine?
No, not on the business side here.
Yeah, and we had a very good showing, and, and we're having some positive results for the county, and that's good for all of the unemployed. It's a great situation. So, yeah, I agree with what you said earlier. We, we missed the boat. If we could figure out a way that the county could step up and help us with that one route for sure, I think that would be very positive. And I may be the only one that's on that page where I still think it's a good opportunity.
That was my question. So if somebody's in east Burlington, Mike, and wants to go to ACC, what is the time to get there?
Uh, probably going to be halfway through the, say, I mean, the end of this route is forty-five minutes to here. Is there anywhere in here? You're going to reduce that down to forty-five minutes and get here. That's going to take you probably a good thirty. We're talking, and we, we designed another.
You've got to catch a ride to ACC.
Right, but if you keep in mind, we designed the whole system to start to be able to beat to ARMC by seven a.m.
Right, but we, but, excuse me, interrupting, but the second part of that equation is, how many times has it run from ARMC to ACC six?
It's run to twice a morning, twice a day.
Right. Is it, is it a perfect time?
So, so one of the opportunities that we could really look at, if we wanted to expand it and, and get it from, from east Burlington directly there, and I agree. Any study tells you that, that going backwards to go forwards not utilized very well. You know, the, the, the direct path is the path someone's going to take. It may be something that the county wants to revisit from a rental use tax standpoint to fund that route. That's a viable option that was brought up before PARK. I know was interested in trying to get the county involved in that at some point in the past. But that would be an opportunity of a funding source to get something like that done in general service, providing that service.
Yeah, but not only that, but it would also give the opportunity for people to go to the county seat.
Right, and go through their ACC to do their things.
I, I don't, I disagree with that. I'm certainly not in favor of going to the county seat when that tip of municipality didn't. But all I'm trying to do is get a straight shot from somewhere in east Burlington, straight to the east side, Bob.
Well, you know, I think that funding public transportation is always a controversial issue, particularly in rural parks. But how to do that, it's very kind of, they're not really being served. But Jim or Mike, you know more about this than I do, but these fifty-three oh seven monies are there to be used for all kinds of public transportation, including bike lanes, greenways, and other forms of transportation that could serve the rural parks or our community.
As long as they're used inside the urbanized area, which is basically what you see here, it's going to be inside your city limits. And they are connecting to a public transportation facility or something. That's how, that's where it's eligible to use the fifty-three oh seven parts. The not eligible route in the urban populated areas is our urban-based money.
Mike, can y'all, uh, estimate the run to school and smart?
We, well, we have routes. We've had several routes. This is more guts. We had a route that, that would go straight out to ACC from downtown Burlington. And with that route, you don't want to. And with that route, you not only just think of the route, you need the equipment. So you're upwards of a hundred twenty-five thousand a year minimum to get that equipment and then a hundred thousand ongoing for that route.
So you're saying it comes two twenty-five for the route, I mean, to get it from, at point A, point B?
The bulk of the equipment would be fifty-three oh seven, basically the bulk of the equipment. The ongoing operation on.
Hundred thousand, hundred thousand dollars is roughly what the routes are averaging now to me, averaging. So you've got a lot of equipment, which would be twenty-five thousand dollar local match, so a hundred twenty-five thousand to get you started. And you have a home going, starting point of a hundred, you're going to go up? Deals can go up, contracts can go up. So that's just an estimate that would be.
So a simple estimate without all the goings would simply be how much for to run the route from somewhere in East Burlington to Community College?
It would be a hundred thousand dollars. Yeah, we had it in before.
Now also what you can do though, you can run that route to the Graham parking lot bar. You know, it's definitely just a parking ride bar, which is, it would be very little time off the interstate and come back to the interstate and get ACC. And that parking lot also from East Burlington.
But that would be the only stop, it would be a straight shot with no stop except the park.
And that's, that's kind of, that's going to be a decision I've got to make, how you want to do that. If you want to be involved in it, and, you know, literally, Mike, that would have to if something like that was going to be done, you'd need to go ahead and figure that out in terms of order, the bus to order. And then there would be some modifications here, but.
Oh, yeah, we're, we're. We need to, yeah, it's a decision I figure in, make the brochures, service maps, the whole production for the transit system.
The county, which, when you cook, you guys are in the process of discussing budget now, aren't you?
We are.
I could see a joint effort between the two, fifty percent of these.
I used to like the mayor. And the mayor used to be a friend of mine. He thinks the feds would pay the other fifty percent.
Any other questions for Mike? That's why I just had your last question.
Brian brought this up, and this may be for Bob or Jim, this is just for education. Is there anything against ACTA running a direct route from East Burlington to ACC?
I think that's the confused thing, guys. What we've been able to get with ACC, we've known ACC a number of times, and they're willing, it's really ACTA worked that very well, they're willing to take the bus, comes in off, right there, put it over. This is not, but this size vehicle. So I think in terms of, certainly you can do that. It would be, you have two systems out there running potentially. And then how you would coordinate with questions on who goes where and when and what part if you need information, that would be a little bit convoluted if it went together. Mike, am I, I missed anybody?
That's kind of my point.
Well, like you were mentioning before, you want to do as much connection as you can. If you create something else that's separate or different, it's probably going to look to a different medium. And that's talking about that's the bones, and that's where we're at right now, making everything coordinated to go together. We wouldn't want to start off something like that and confuse the public. We want to make sure they know what the lesson is.
Any other questions for Mike? No, but do you have anything to add to that? Any other questions before Vice Chairman closes up the meeting? Any other comments about?
I just wanted to thank Harold Hitzapp for helping coordinate this. And also the, I appreciate that Max County Commissioner, their willingness to meet well. And when the discussion came up, it was a unanimous yes, and this is something that's important to do. And hopefully we can continue to do this at least on a annual basis.
Last time we boards met, I think it was two thousand and eight or nine, the Knoval Center, that public transportation.
That's, I remember.
Maybe he didn't.
Maybe it's my annual.
Any other?
Board members, is my board, do y'all have anything you'd like to add to the conversation?
Council members, is there anything? Otherwise, this council will entertain most of your energy.